Good evening. It's now 5:35. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is now being called to order. It's May 11th, 2021. We do have a quorum. I'll ask Mr. Carolina if you would give us the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help us as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and further to the best we can do. Words of the land and resources for the citizens of Georgetown County. We ask this in the name of Lord Jesus Christ, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina, for the invocation and the leading of the Pledge of Allegiance. We now move on down to the approval of the agenda. There's a recommendation to move items 15A, B, and C forward on the agenda. And there's also a recommendation to add an executive session prior to public comment. But after items 15A, B, and 15C, to relieve, to receive legal advice regarding ordinance number 21-18. And ordinance to amend the Georgetown Memorial Hospital Weehawke Campus Plan Development. TMS number 02-1009-018-03 to allow for multifamily as a permitted use. You have a motion for approval of the agenda with the recommended changes.
So move.
It's there second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Motion pass. We'll now move to nonprofit spotlight. We have, this week's featured nonprofit is Friendship Place. The Executive Director, Charlie Ball, will be making the presentation. Good evening, Mr. Ball.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you all tonight. My name is Charlie Ball, and for more than 20 years, I've been the Executive Director of Friendship Place. We started off as a small seasonal soup kitchen at St. Sipriens Outreach, just a few blocks down the road. With a two-fold mission, one to address food insecurities in our community and the other to listen to our neighbors and discover the unmet needs of our community. The meal program is still going strong. We call it Georgetown Eats. We serve meals five days a week. All the meals are to go and in accordance with CDC rules and regulations, and everyone is welcome. We still listen. It's harder now with masks on. And we still provide a safe, peaceful environment for our most vulnerable neighbors. It's a great place to serve and to be served. The fruit of Georgetown Eats is in the program that we've developed. And as a result, I will now yield the remainder of my time. I've always wanted to say that in a group like this. I'll now yield the remainder of my time to the administrators of two of our initiatives. First up will be Clarice Julius of Georgetown Works.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Clarice Julius, and I am the Employment Coach and Recruiter for our Georgetown Works Program. Georgetown Works is a program that is commonly used throughout Georgetown County. It's one of the most commonly used programs. It's been designed to improve employability. And it is about transitioning people from unemployment to employment and improving the self-sufficiency of our neighbors. We've been continuing to work throughout the pandemic. We've gone from being in person and using safety precautions. So we've transitioned to everything virtually. And we've still been assisting our neighbors and helping their families through finding them resources and being a mediator for them with giving them information to help their families and again, help them with transitioning from unemployment to employment.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sophia Cumby. I'm the Advancement Career Coach for Friendship Place, working in our Georgetown Works Program. One thing that is very unique about our program is about the relationships that we build with each and every member. It's not just about finding employment or getting them back to work. It's also about taking a journey with them. That journey is full of barriers that's preventing them from reaching their self-sufficiency. Whether it's from emotional, spiritual, psychological, or even financials, we are here to assist them in every capacity that we can. Thank you. Now we have coming up Whitney Smith.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Whitney Smith, and I am the Office Administrator for Riverside Behavior and Learning Collaborative. We also are called RVLC. So RVLC is the newest initiative of Friendship Place. And it was started for, as a collective concern for the unmet behavioral healthcare needs in Georgetown County. It started with, well, we got a startup fund from the Vanell Foundation. The property was given to us in the beginning for a year by Jody Tamsberg. And then also Friendship Place took it under their wing. And so this is the newest initiative. Started, we opened in June of 2020, and despite COVID, we've been doing really good. What we found is there's a gap in insurance where clients are either underinsured or either they're uninsured. And so like if they have private insurance, then mental healthcare isn't being covered. Or if they have Medicaid, they don't cover like evaluations and things like that. So it was a goal of ours to not ever turn away anybody who needed those mental healthcare needs, but to find a way to provide it to them. So we target children, adolescents, but we also serve adults as well. And we're just hopeful that the early impact that we're making is preventing and gonna result in a positive outcome later in life. I also wanted to talk about our collaboration with Georgetown Works Program. So clients will go through the skills training week with Clarice and Sophia. And then they're offered an initial assessment at our office, which is a full evaluation. And it will highlight the strengths and weaknesses of each client and then also provide job recommendations for them and how they can succeed in their new employment. Not only do we receive clients from Friendship Place, but we also refer clients to the Georgetown Works Program. A few months ago, we actually had a client whose parent was a single parent of three children, and she was unemployed. So we made a referral to Georgetown Works, and they got her into the skills training program. And she left not with one job, but with several jobs. So I just wanted to let y'all know about that as well. And then lastly, I just wanted to talk about the services that we're providing to the community. We have licensed professional counselors, and we have school psychologists, and we have a speech therapist, all providing pro bono services to the community. To date, we have 280 hours of pro bono hours. And that is all free services that we gave to clients who were previously not being served or not getting the mental healthcare needs that they needed. If you need a referral, I'd be happy to assist you with that. So you can just reach out to me or stop by the office, and I'll be glad to help you. Thank you. And if anyone has questions at this time, we would be happy to entertain those.
Are there any comments or questions from any of the council members? Hearing none. We would like to thank Mr. Ball and your other representatives from Friendship Place for informing the county of some of the activities that you all provide service to Georgetown County with. Really appreciate your services. Thank you. We'll now move on to Employee of the Quarter presentation by Mr. Walt Alkerman. We'll do the Employee of the Quarter recognition and also the special recognition, if that's okay with you.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, if you will indulge me, I'd actually like to do the special recognition first. Due to the nature, I'm actually recognizing the entire MIS team as a special recognition. And then the employee of the quarter is actually a member of the MIS team. So I'd like to kind of flip those in reverse, if it's okay.
Sure, that's fine.
As, as everyone is aware, hopefully everyone is aware, we just went through our recent cyber attack, which was absolutely crippling for the county's network for, you know, a period of sixty some odd days. And through that, our MIS team as a group really rose to the challenge. I mean, this is something that was well beyond their ordinary scope of duties. But they came together as a unit, worked with myself, Ms. Christian, all the department heads, anybody. Y'all were on the tri-weekly update calls. You kind of saw all the stuff that was going on in the background. We were faced with a challenge of basically reinventing our network or reinventing the wheel on the fly just to try to get county operations back up. And these folks, I mean, they worked tirelessly, thinking outside of the box, coming up with new creative, innovative ways so that we could continue to serve the citizens, even, even if only in a limited capacity. For their outstanding effort, all the work that they put in, I would really like to take this time and do a special recognition for, for that group. And I think it's very important for everyone to know that even though we're, for all intents and purposes, back up to speed, they're still working a lot on the after effects of, of the cyber attack. In order to get us back working, they had to, as I say, reinvent that wheel, come up with new methods of doing things. And now they're trying to, as I said, put Humpty Dumpty back together again. They're trying to unscramble that egg and get us back where we're going. In addition to all the other normal day-to-day stuff. So these folks are really, really working hard. I've asked them to be at the meeting if they, if they could, but they've been working such long hours. I didn't want to say, hey, you gotta be at this meeting. So if anybody's here, if you would, please rise and come on up. We actually have a certificate that I'd like for them to be able to display in their department so that when anyone walks in, they'll see what a, what a great, fantastic job these folks have been doing. Do we have any members from the MIS team here other than Truman? And who do we have? And Seth, and Kip, and Doug, and Johnny Pope? So yes, if you will, let's, let's come up on the stage and do a presentation and get a photo. And we can frame that. Thank you, guys, for everything. All right, Mr. Chairman, for the presentation of Employee of the Quarter, this was, you know, it's always a tough decision. But we actually talked as a, as a group of directors about recognizing all the folks as employee of the quarter or coming up with some kind of new policy. It was very difficult to choose employee of the quarter, but this entire group stood out. But in the end, Seth Housen of our MIS department was recognized as employee of the quarter. And part of the reason why he's being recognized is, as I said, the entire team has been commended. And part of the reason why he's being recognized is, as I said, the entire team has been commended, but Seth was especially instrumental in assisting with us getting back up to speed and doing all the things that we needed to do to put the county back in a working order. You know, the MIS department, as of now, does not have a full-time department head. So, there was a real need for somebody to step up and do all that administrative type things, working with vendors, getting quotes, all the non-technical duties that folks in, in a, in a management position would need to do, as well as really communicating with the upper management folks. And as I said, on that tri-weekly call, I generally did the call as a translator. So, we would, we would brief each other and he would try to tell me what that meant in English and so that I could tell everybody else on those tri-weekly calls. But he did an extraordinary amount of work and none of this would have been possible without all of his efforts. And so, we want to recognize him as Employee of the Quarter for the first quarter of 2019. 2021, I'm sorry. I think my brain got hacked, too.
Thank you, Mr. Alkman, and congratulations to all of you. Thanks for all the work that you've done, especially getting us back on, online. We'll now move into executive session to receive legal advice regarding ordinance number 21-18 and ordinance to amend the Georgetown Memorial Hospital Weehawke Campus Plan Development, TMS number 02-1009-018-02-03 to allow for multifamily as a permitted use. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Both? We're now into executive session. Okay. We are back from executive session. Is there a motion to exit executive session, go back into general session? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of returning back to our regular session? Express hands. Okay. We're now back in general session. Please like to record note that we entered into executive session to receive legal advice regarding ordinance number 21-18 and ordinance to amend the Georgetown Memorial Hospital Weehawke Campus Plan Development, TMS number 02-1009-018-02-03 to allow for multifamily as a permitted use. Also, let the record reflect that no votes were taken while we are in executive session. We'll move on down to... Now in public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes depending on the number of speakers who have signed up to speak. No speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address counsel during the public input period should sign up with the clerk of counsel before the meeting is called to order. No person shall be allowed to indulge in personalities, use language personally offensive, charge deliberate misrepresentation, or use language intended to hold a member of counsel, a member of the county staff, or a member of the public up to contempt or ridicule. Madam Clerk, how many persons do we have signed up?
Mr. Chairman, we do have 23 speakers tonight.
Twenty?
Twenty-three.
Normally we have only 30 minutes set aside for public comments, and that would well exceed the time that's allotted, but in essence of time, we will allot each person two minutes to make their public comments. It will still exceed our allotted time, and we will allot two minutes per speaker. Please be respectful of the time. The timer will go off when the two minutes is up. Please be respectful of the time.
Mr. Chairman, our first speaker tonight is Mark Ricketts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and counsel. My name is Mark Ricketts. I live in Windsor, so I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the addition of multifamily zoning to the track known as Georgetown Hospital Weehawke Track. I have several points, and I've emailed each and every one of you my points. A couple have responded back, and I'm grateful for that. Hopefully, all of you will read that. But I'm here tonight because I oppose the designation of multifamily to that track. I don't believe that track would have ever been put into a PD had it not been in 2008 that medical services were needed for what then was going to be potentially the Crown Point development. Since that didn't happen, the hospital has subsequently stated in the planning meeting that it has no future intent of providing or placing any medical services on that track. Therefore, its current zoning is false, is not valid. I would ask the council to look at that and consider that because we wouldn't be here today talking about this if that hadn't have been done in 2008. There'd be no way for anyone to come and ask for multifamily to be added to a conservation track because you wouldn't have done it, not for multifamily. With that being said, having spoken with Senator Scott's office last week about qualified opportunity zones, he said the intent of those was to bring economic prosperity into underserved communities, and that's what I understand the developer is going to use to develop this. Looking at the 2020 census, this is not an underserved area. We're at 131% of the state median income, and we're not economically deprived. I submit that the sole reason for doing this is it makes a difference in the amount of profit that can be made on this track versus others. Thank you.
I'm here to speak on the ordinance 21-18, the amendment to the Georgetown Memorial Hospital Weehawke Campus. My name is Bob McMahon. I live and vote in Georgetown County. I spoke last time about many studies show that smaller projects, typically less than 50 units, have no impact on adjoining property values or crime, but larger projects result in increased crime and diminished property values. Also that several smaller projects distributed throughout the community is much better than large ones. A review of impact of affordable housing on families and communities by enterprise show that affordable housing can improve the quality of life for residents, such as housing stability and health. Affordable housing can increase access to health amenities. Well, there are no health amenities near this site. Also, transportation costs and access. Affordable housing located near public mass transit can help low-income residents access better jobs and reach critical community services. Again, there are no public mass transit systems near there, nor are there any jobs or community services near this site. Many papers cite past affordable housing studies. Most studies on this topic are based on data from large East Coast cities. All are based in major metropolitan areas, mostly urban settings. I argue that the findings of any of these studies cannot be transferable from larger cities to smaller ones or from urban to suburban or rural contexts. Many studies are based in New York City, which I don't think compares at all to Georgetown. I don't know why we're looking at studies from New York and Chicago or any of the larger cities. They just don't equate to our situation here. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Joe Myers, live in Wedgefield, have for seven years. I'm going to speak in guard to ordinance 21-18. I call it the proposed Porter's Landing at Wedgefield and 701 and 51. It's wrong location for multifamily housing. Title Dance Corporation is pushing this location for the 130% of cost in federal tax credits, which tax credits are sellable. It'd be one heck of a windfall profit. Spend $2 million in cost, get 2.6 back in federal tax credits you can sell to other corporations. Holly Richardson of Georgetown Planning Commission, excuse me, on April 14 of this year, stated that a task force study is needed to select proper sites for affordable housing. She asked that the results be within one year. Why are we rushing to decision now ahead of a study? This location is two and a half miles outside of Georgetown city limits. It's not within walking distance of any grocery, retail, medical, dental, daycare. It does not comply with South Carolina law on planned developments. It will be a $1.2 million burden on Georgetown County taxpayers due to reduced or eliminated impact fees. This year's county study shows $7,500 per unit infrastructure costs. They want to build 160 units in Phase 1 and 2 to be followed by additional phases, including Montana will tell you, Phase 3 and 4. This is at least $1.2 million. Well, let me close on a positive note. You got a fast timer. We have over 1,000 voters who are not against affordable housing, but we are positively against this location for multifamily units. Thank you for your time.
Nancy Johnston.
My name is Nancy Johnston, and I moved to Wedgefield in 1987. The property in question was in a conservation easement and bought by the hospital in 2008. I'm sure the family that broke the conservation easement felt that they were doing the community a favor by enabling a hospital and medical offices at that location. The planned entrance and exit were on Highway 701, not Wedgefield Road, with big plans for a new intersection. It has been 13 years, and none of the traffic adjustments have been made. This development, if approved, will overwork Wedgefield Road, an already dangerous intersection. The proposed 90 apartments will destroy the beauty and natural habitat of this area. There are better locations for these apartments. These apartments do not encourage home ownership or community pride. If this acreage must be developed, single-family homes would be much more desirable. I urge the board to please vote no. Thank you.
Mitch Gunner.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am here today actually requesting county council to vote no on the proposed multifamily PUD change. In the 2008 traffic study done for the original PUD, it was determined that it needed to be lighted at the intersection of Wedgefield Road and Highway 701. I believe it was a hurricane requirement, it was required a combination of Highway 51 to be a four-way stop. Since then, Highway 701 has continued to expand with now four lanes all the way out. Highway 51 traffic will be increasing shortly due to the brick chimney road finally being paved for somewhat of a bypass around town. This area does not have the infrastructure to support the existing traffic it has now. We are still facing the same intersection and the same problem with no solutions. If county council does approve this change, the traffic on Wedgefield Road will increase next month, not months, years down the road, next month. And after the construction, the developer says he'll be renting units in 2023. Well, I assure you, by 2023, there will not be any intersection at that road. You also asked the people of Wedgefield Road to tolerate this additional traffic and for us to wait until you can get a resolve for the intersection of this road, which is many, many years down the road. At the original time that the intersection, the light was determined, it was actually for the expansion of the Crown Point and the additional traffic, but that determination of the light was determination on the traffic at that time. That was in 2008, and now it's 2021, and we still haven't made decisions on that intersection. With that in mind, I hope you will deny the existing proposal.
Thank you, county council, for allowing myself and others here to express our opinions on this issue that we have before us today. My name is Jim Clark, and I live in Windsor. I'm here also representing the owners of the Weehawke Plantation property, which is 1,028 acres. I'm also here to represent the owners of the Mansfield Plantation property, which is 868 acres. Collectively, we have about 2,000 acres in this situation. Both the owners of these properties are strongly in favor of development for low-income housing and recognize the need for this type of housing in Georgetown County and in South Carolina. Both these property owners, however, are opposed to this development, strongly opposed to it. The zoning change will allow this development on 16 acres along Wedgefield Road. They're opposed to this development for three strong reasons. Environmental reasons, economic reasons, and most importantly, something we haven't discussed here, is cultural reasons. Each one of these reasons can be explained thoughtfully and thoroughly and with reason. However, this is not the time to bring this, the facts, to the council. Time will reveal through environmental studies as well as assessments of the economic adverse effect on the Wedgefield Road, but most importantly, it will take time to reveal the cultural impact. This proposed development is an abuse, an abuse of the low-income housing tax credit program. I've got the document right here, 92 pages. It says the South Carolina State Housing Finance and Development Authority Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program, 92 pages. Read it, and you'll see the abuse. Low-income housing tax credit program, it's an abuse environmentally, economically, and most importantly, culturally. It's an abuse of the system. Those who will be awkwardly positioned, stressed, and disserviced are the future residents. The proposed low-income housing tax credit program, geographically, this location is wrong. I believe you as council know it's wrong. We know it, but the landowner and the developers don't know it. This is a masquerade party, far as I'm concerned. Tax credits to the developers and landowners, and abuse to the system and disservice to the future residents of this low-income tax housing development. Thank you.
I'm a resident of Wedgefield Plantation, and I oppose the proposed development of the Weehawke Plantation property into apartments. But first, I need to set the record straight on an issue. At the last county council meeting, a member of the NAACP labeled our opposition to this project as being based on race. Let me just say that couldn't be further from the truth. This is not a race issue. I'd like to address problems on Wedgefield Road. This is the only road into Wedgefield Plantation in the Windsor community. In January 2018, Georgetown received five inches of snow and freezing rain. We could not get in or out of our community for five days. Wedgefield Road was completely covered in a thick coating of solid ice. You could only leave if you wanted to take your life into your own hands. Thank goodness there were no medical emergencies or fires during that time because emergency vehicles and equipment would not have been able to get to us. As a matter of fact, when the county finally sent a dump truck with salt for the road, five days after the snow dropped, the truck turned onto Wedgefield Road and immediately slid off the road and spilled its load of salt on the side of the road. Add 90 to 150 more families and their traffic living on Wedgefield Road, and that creates more of a danger when this type of storm happens again, and it will. Is the county going to commit to improve their response time and purchase the necessary equipment to address this type of event, seeing as the risk will be so much higher with the increased occupancy on Wedgefield Road with only one way in and out? The intersection of Wedgefield Road and 701 is very dangerous, and I personally have been involved in a car accident at that intersection. It's a terrifying intersection. It needs to be addressed, and I'm sure it will not be corrected in a timely fashion or quickly. I can't imagine adding 90 to 150 more families trying to enter that intersection during morning and evening rush hour traffic. morning and evening rush hour traffic. Thank you for your time.
I find it very concerning that Tideland Health is making a decision as to where this housing should be located in the county. 46 and Blue Line have mentioned several times that they plan on using low-income housing tax credits, also referred to as LI-TEC, as a source of funding for this project. Well, according to the HUD Census Track of 2021, the location that they're looking for is not deemed as a eligible track under HUD. There's other tracks that should be considered by the developer but hasn't. There is a perfectly suitable location in Maryville on Highway 17. The property is 28.4 acres for 890,000 where this other property is 800,000 for just 16 acres. So that makes a $31,000 acre versus a $50,000 acre. It's located in the city limits in Maryville. It's outside the city limits on Wedgefield Road. There's additional entrance and exits to that property on Old Charleston Road, whereas the lady before me just mentioned, this is our only road for Wedgefield, Windsor, and other people in that area. There's about 577 homes and lots within Wedgefield, so you're talking about adding quite a bit. The traffic is a fraction in Maryville where it is more extensive on Wedgefield Road. Also, that property is located within a half a mile of a full-service grocery store and other amenities, even with a fire station and daycare across the street. There's none of that here and the Walmart's two miles away. The opportunity zone completely surrounds the Maryville area, which would bring in other businesses to support that development. Over on Wedgefield Road, it's only on the east side of Fraser Street. It's not even on the other side of Wedgefield Road. No other businesses are going to move there to support this development. There's a mixed zoning on Fraser Street where this would be spot zoning on Wedgefield Road. According to the Land and Development Zoning Ordinance of Georgetown County's websites, you have the authority to put this back where it was meant to be and I hope that you will vote against this proposal. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. The developer wants us all to believe that if we can provide housing that takes up no more than 30% of a family's income, this will help them to save money and lift themselves from poverty and help them build some wealth. That's an unfounded claim. This is only true with homeownership where the family could benefit from appreciation in the future. Families with incomes within the guidelines of this project are in no position to bank enough money to significantly improve their net worth, even with only a 30% housing allowance. The only people that will build wealth with this proposed development are 46 and Blue Line. Even Georgetown County won't gain as much in tax revenue with this project as it could with alternative siting. Specifically, I will refer to the west side of our city where there are currently many dilapidated homes and vacant lots. It seems to me that government subsidies and grants would be much more productive if used to renew the west side of our city. The infrastructure is already there. Proximity to just about everything is much better than the proposed site. As abandoned homes are renovated and new homes are built on the vacant parcels, perhaps in conjunction with habitat, the entire west side would be lifted in value and in spirit. This in turn would encourage even more private investment in the area. Beneficiaries of the grants and subsidies would become homeowners, not renters, able to eventually see a gain in their monthly investment, not a deep dark hole they keep tossing their hard-earned money into. Georgetown City and County would both see greater tax revenue from this approach. Think a rising tide lifts all boats. Instead, the proposed project, cited as it is, will tear up environmentally sensitive land and add to the existing traffic and safety concerns around Wedgefield Road, 701 and 51. This model of creating new housing by continually carving up virgin land when plenty of underused land is here is not sustainable and is a travesty to those you are supposed to be aiding with the effort and investment. Help people, not profit-motivated developers and corporate entities. Thank you.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Mike Downs and I strongly advise this council to not walk but run away from any projects brought forth by either 46 or Blue Line Development. A month ago, 46 had a webpage which has since disappeared. Blue Line uses multiple LLC names. If they are such reputable companies, then why all the smoke and mirrors? Blue Line's listed main office is located at 1004 Southwest Avenue in Missoula, Montana. This is a company that claims to be doing multimillion-dollar developments all over the country and their office is a revamped 1,000-square-foot Hertz building. If you look two doors down, there is Montana Property Development. That is what you would expect to see a company like this. It's a three-story building, it's probably 10,000 square foot. If you look online, there are eight different LLCs and INCs used by Blue Line. And there is a difference between an LLC and an INC. This is so that they can't be traced. How do you hold a company that is no longer in business accountable for anything? Are these the kind of companies that you want to have your constituents know that you intend to do business with? They wipe their hands clean after bilking millions and you're left with mud on your hands. And the voters of Georgetown will hold you accountable. Have the greater good of Georgetown in your mind when you vote no on this issue. As I stated before, don't walk but run away from these companies. Does Georgetown County have a need for low-income housing? Yes. There are larger and cheaper pre-approved sites that are more fit to support the needs of such housing, but Blue Line and Weehawh are neither the developer nor the site to do it. Thank you.
How are y'all? Thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm Scott Powell, retired captain with DNR Law Enforcement. My wife and I have been living in Wedgefield for 30 years. We have a very good community there. We strongly oppose the development at the head of the Wedgefield Road from emergency evacuation purposes, traffic. You've got about 576 lots that are in Wedgefield, 446 homes now, so you're looking at over 1,000 vehicles coming out of the Wedgefield to evacuate on 701. And then you're going to put, you know, this is the first phase, it's talking about 90 units, but then it's going to be another 350 units after that and at this phase at the head of the road, so that's another 1,000 vehicles trying to get out on 701. Our community is not a racist community. There's been stuff brought up about that. We have people from every race and all walks of life in our community, in Wedgefield and Windsor, and we all get along. Everybody gets along well. But this development at the head of the road is nothing but a problem. It's an issue, it's a safety issue with traffic and it's going to be a problem for us and our communities down the road. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. I'm Ed Wozniacki. This Weehawh track of land does not qualify for this project under previous studies. The traffic is horrendous and a main artery into Georgetown, Myrtle Beach, Charleston, and I-95. The logging trucks are on this route heavily, more so now than ever, and two traffic lights will create more danger than we now have getting out of Wedgefield Road. There are also wetlands that will be impacted. The information on the traffic study the developers were using were from '08 and much has changed in 13 years. The developer states that this is going to create more jobs. Really show us where the jobs are. The steel mill is closed and the paper mill and Walmart and Hospital are the three largest employers of Georgetown. We have never heard any complaints from either about housing for their employees. Go less than one mile down 701 and there's an opportunity zone between Walmart and Summit Avenue. It already has an existing traffic signal, a road in and out, restaurants, numerous shopping centers, doctors, dentists, offices, and more shopping centers just across the street, all within walking distance. It's also convenient to all the schools for the families that this project is intended to serve. Consider Maryville and Andrews as opportunity zones. There is a location for everything and this is not the location. Just read the reviews on Blue Line developers and you will see that they are interested in the tax credits and putting big money in their own pockets. Don't we want better for the residents who need affordable housing? There are numerous complaints online about maintaining this development and Blue Line developers cannot sell them for 25 years. It's known that care of these units is not what it should be once the people move in. Send this developer back to Montana and put this project in their backyard. Then they will realize there is more to building and owning a complex of this type and care for them and not try shoving it down our throats. Doesn't it seem strange that out of all South Carolina, I find this track very property? I wonder how. Keep our beautiful, low-country environment of Georgetown just as it is. This developer is a disgrace, insulting, and disrespectful to the Georgetown residents. Thank you.
I'm Bonnie Myers and I'm a resident of Wedgefield Community. We all recognize that affordable housing is needed. I have not heard one person from my community state otherwise. From the many studies I have read, it's also important to recognize that affordable housing, to be successful, needs to be placed in the right location. Affordable housing should be in an area that most needs it. It can be in close proximity, within a mile of the needs of that community, such as daycare, shopping, medical needs, but most importantly, jobs. This is not the case in the current proposed location. This is a direct quote from Forbes, a global media company that focuses on businesses, investing, lifestyle, and currently affordable housing because of the interest in tax credits. Quote, "You must ensure the affordable housing development goes through a thorough, due-diligent process. Don't make a rushed decision and let others invest in a bad deal solely to obtain tax incentives." Also, keep in mind that a good real estate investment might not make a good opportunity for zone investment. Not our words, not anybody that I have worked with's words. This is directly from Forbes, which is a global media company that focuses on business and investing and lifestyles of affordable housing. Please take their advice as they have seen how bad a location can affect the successful outcome of affordable housing. Council, I present to you 292 petitions, individually signed letters, from the residents in the Wedgefield area. These were not harvested. These people worked hard to get these to the right location, had to make copies, drop them off, and they represent approximately 2/3 of our community. I ask you to please do your due diligence in order to make sure this project meets all the guidelines for a successful development. From all you have heard before me here tonight, you should know that this is not the right location. And to conclude, I would like all those who are against building this project at 701 in Wedgefield Road to stand and show your support. And thank all of you.
Keenan Witt.
Hello, I am Keenan Witt with Blue Line Development. I just wanted to introduce myself. I've learned some things about my company here tonight that I didn't know, so I'm here to answer any questions, address any concerns the council may have about the project and the specifics. Thank you all for your time.
Charlena B. Johnson. Tranis Parker.
Good afternoon. $3 million left from the penny sales tax. Please, council, with $750,000 grant money and the $300,000 that we were given out of the million, it's still not enough for the Spring Gully community. Please, we need more money so our living conditions can improve from flooding and everything else. And I want to say one more thing on an experience I had and be real quick, but I've been here before the council before and hopefully with the new matter administrator, we can get something done about it, those recycling centers. I know I'm going to go to jail and be fined because I refuse to go to these recycling centers and be told I cannot throw my trash in there because they are filled. That's unacceptable and it's been going on too long. And it's up to the county administrator and you guys to see for more money and put more people out there to work. And this has been going on all week this week. All of the containers are filled. And we have eight recycling centers, from my understanding, eight drivers. Something has to be done, whether they get overtime or whatever. I work in Charleston. I live in Spring Gully. I drive and dump my trash here in Maryville. If I can't dump my trash there, where am I going to dump it? Now I got to go to another county and unlawfully dump my trash or let it sit in my car all day. And my wife owns a daycare. That's not fair when I pay my taxes. This has been going on way too long and I've been here way too many times and complained about that trash. And something needs to be done, whether you look at it, the landfills, the recycling centers are too small, make them bigger. They out there in the middle of nowhere. Something needs to be done and I'm pleased, Madam Administrator, take a look at that. And it's going on. Every single week, we get refused to dump our trash. Thank you.
Tony Cates.
My name's Tony Cates and I'm here to represent the developer, development team, and 46 Development. First, I want to say thank you, council, for hearing this. And I just want to make a couple of quick points. First is that we are here for a preliminary approval to amend the PUD that is in question for approval of multifamily use. We have answered questions on what the use intends to be, but at this point, there is nothing guaranteed that it will be an affordable housing community. This is for multifamily and multifamily alone. If we were to be approved and receive the LI-Tech credits that have been mentioned, I want to give you a quick timeline of what that would look like so you understand how we would be back and when we would be back to bring a fully vetted project. If we receive a vote that is of approval tonight, we will submit our final application on May 28. August of 2021, the final award notifications will be given for all of LI-Tech. It will take us two to three months for a design period and to complete our due diligence. This puts us at the end of 2021, around December. or the beginning of 2022, that we will come back to this same process with a fully vetted, completely detailed project that would include the traffic studies, the elevations, the plans, and everything that has been discussed here today. That will be our final PD amendment, which everybody will have a chance to weigh in with. What I, the last piece that I want to talk about is, if you have any questions regarding the memo that was distributed on Friday, we are here to do that. You heard from Keenan, and she's here along with myself to answer those questions or any questions that you have regarding LI-Tech program or the compliance that has been discussed again. We will be here. I think there will be another discussion with the applicant, and if you have any other further questions, we'll take them then. Thank you.
Wesley Gibson.
Good evening, counsel. First, I would like to thank our county administrator, Ms. Christian, and our recreation director, Ms. Beth Goodall, for finally finishing the Beck facility so that the youth of the city can have a decent facility to stay off the streets and perhaps be our next track star or basketball player or just to have fun. The facilities at Beck, if you haven't seen them, counsel, you need to go by there and see how they're being used. That was money well spent. I just want to say thanks to Beth and thanks, Ms. Christian, for the youth and the adults of Georgetown City. Second of all, I am for affordable housing. And like the previous speaker, it is not a racial thing. It's not a rich or poor thing, but it is a necessity. People making $15,000 to $40,000 a year need a place to live. They were not fortunate to live in maybe New York or Pennsylvania where they have great pensions. They can sell their home up here, come down here and buy home cash, like most of these people. They're not from here. These people are people that are going to be working, and they need jobs and they need a place to stay. The Boeing study, which you guys just paid for, says that it's a necessity. It says that these people need a place to live. It also says that's one reason why you're not getting employers' jobs to come here because they don't have any workforce housing. I'm saying, please think about it and vote yes because this could be a start of something special for the poor and the disenfranchised. Thank you.
Sharon Melton Jones.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Melton Jones. I've lived in Georgetown on and off all my life. My main focus today is affordable housing. We need affordable housing in Georgetown for everybody. It isn't a racial thing, it's a needs thing. And if we don't want to miss the opportunity to do something good for the citizens, all of the citizens in Georgetown County, we need to take advantage of this. Let's not miss this opportunity to help everybody in Georgetown. Thank you.
Jackie Williams.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Williams, and I am a native of Georgetown. Lived here pretty much all of my life. I am certainly for this particular development. I think that there are some key and critical things that have been said here tonight. The gentleman said, talked about the masquerade party. Well, if it's a masquerade party, then let's just go ahead and pull the mask off. One lady said that this is not about race. She is absolutely correct. This is not just about race, this is about race and classism at its best. I don't have to stand here and try to convince, or shouldn't have to stand here and try to convince anybody about the serious impact that voting this down will have. You don't have to listen to me. Look out into this audience and see the great divide that no one wants to talk about. A gentleman came up and said, "We're not racist. We have mixed people, different people in our community." One lady asked everybody to stand. I saw one person of color. Having one person of color in your community does not qualify as diversity and inclusion. Does not. I see people that I have been to the gym with, people that I have gone to school with. So are you telling me on tonight that it is okay for me to communicate and interact with you in a gym? Go to school with you, but it is not okay for me to live in the same community that you live in? There is something seriously wrong with that picture. And beyond the issue of housing, counsel, if this undercurrent of blatant racism and classism is not addressed, then, you can say whatever you want to say, then this, this, this city, excuse me, I did not interrupt you when you were talking, give me the same respect. As I, as I. And they should be able to live in this community just like anybody else.
Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams, will you please address counsel, please? Please wrap up your comments.
If we, in my closing, please consider voting for this development to help this community of Wedgefield have a better understanding of what cultural differences are and maybe learn something from living with people that may have a different culture. Thank you.
Morgan Neal.
Again, good evening to everyone. First of all, I love to say, free speech is, is great in America. I fought for it, and I think that opportunity is for everyone. To the county council, there are 62,000 people that lives in Georgetown. We don't represent 62,000 people. But this project that we are talking about, it represents 12,000 people that commutes to Georgetown every day. That's what it represents, the start of something different. It also, it represents teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, half of Santee Cooper's employment force on Winnyard, at Winnyard Generation Station, where I worked for 21 years also. That's what it represents. And I didn't call them low lifers. I didn't call them inbreds. Toy Long did. She lives in Wedgefield. So it's time for someone else to address her other than us because this is, this is a cultural thing, as someone said. I don't care where you put the affordable housing at, but if, if, if the project is deemed to go there based on the census tract and everything else that was discussed in front of you, I ask you to vote for it. I ask you to vote for it. Traffic situation at Wedgefield, with or without this project, needs to be dealt with anyhow. So that's a DOT issue. That's a DOT issue. So that definitely needs to be addressed. You have units on Wedgefield right now that will degrade the vibe of the property that's about to be sent there. If you go and drive out there, you have units out there. They're not even close to the units that's coming there. So we need to look at that also. If traffic is going to be that bad there, well, maybe we need to put a moratorium on any other building that's come to Wedgefield because there's a problem there until we address the traffic issue. That's what we are saying here tonight. Let's not continue to degrade people based on race, creed, and color. That's not necessary. This is America. We all built it. We all built America. And let's remember, seven county council members, they are, they were elected to do due diligence to the citizens of Georgetown County. Please do that tonight and vote yes for this project. Thank you.
Marilyn Hemingway.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Hemingway, CEO and founder of the Galaguchi Chamber of Commerce. First, let's start with the definition of affordable housing. Thirty percent of any income level is, for spent on housing, is affordable. Affordable housing, decent affordable housing, is vitally important to all families. We have top five reasons of champion, to champion affordable housing. It's healthy. It has proven that lack of affordable housing can worsen physical and mental illness, expose citizens to health hazards, and prevent chronic medical conditions from being treated. It's good for children. Research by John Hopkins University shows that children living in households that spend about 30% of their income on housing have better intellectual and cognitive abilities. It builds sustainable communities. Well-designed affordable housing developments can have a substantial positive impact on surrounding communities, reducing overcrowding, attracting businesses and jobs, and lowering crime rates. It creates jobs, short-term and long-term jobs, attracting employers and employees, boosting consumer spending, and it promotes diversity. Affordable housing developments promote diversity by creating communities that unite people of different socioeconomic, educational, professional, and cultural backgrounds. Tonight, I was going to go into a little bit more detail, but after listening to many of these speakers, I find it to be very disturbing, the attitudes towards this particular project. So I wanted to address that. First, I live in Maryville. My family is part of a generation that built the first and only African-American development, Virginia Heights, that's found in Maryville. It was not wanted then, and for, for many years, we had to deal with that, even to the point that the KKK burned a cross in the yard of my aunt, who lived next door to us. This is a group of family and friends who came together and developed this. The second black doctor in Georgetown County, educators and business owners. The second generation. We've taken it to the next level because of the opportunity afforded to us through affordable housing. We now have business owners, engineers, dentists, and doctors amongst the second generation. Affordable housing gives access to opportunity. Affordable housing creates nurturing environments that allow children to grow and become productive citizens. But to hear the attitudes tonight about this, this is not about race, it is always about race. You made a conscious choice to live on Wedgefield Plantation. You made a choice to live on a plantation, descendants of which live here tonight. County Council, I'm addressing you, and you need to do your job, and when people are interrupted, they need to be removed by the people who are interrupting. Need to be removed.
Ms. Hemingway, you would need to conclude your comments there. The buzzer's already sounded. Try to conclude your comments, please. I understand what you're saying.
Ms. Durant, thank you for bringing that to my attention. I certainly wish that you had said that to others who had gone over their time. So I'm here tonight to say that the Galaguchi Chamber of Commerce fully supports affordable housing in Georgetown County, and we thank Ms. Williams for bringing to the attention of all of us the undercurrent of caste, classism, and race that others refuse to acknowledge. Thank you.
Amy Armstrong.
Good evening, county council members. My name's Amy Armstrong. I'm with the South Carolina Environmental Law Project, and I'm having difficulty finding the words after some of the powerful comments that I've just heard. And, and I, I agree with the comments made by Marilyn Hemingway just, just now. I think we have some problems with affordable housing. We have a need for it. And in that regard, I'm very much in support of ensuring that we have affordable housing and, and a project like this in, in the county. So I don't really want to address this, the affordable housing aspect because I think it's needed. The problem that I'm here about today is the nature of the property that this project's proposed for. I, I've been working in conservation for the past 20 years. I'm very familiar with the land trusts throughout the state of South Carolina, and we've got some really great homegrown South Carolina land trusts here. And so when I looked at the conservation easement, that I'm assuming that you all have seen, governing this property, it was from the North American Land Trust, which raised some red flags. Something didn't seem quite right. And when I looked at the, the easement itself and then the purported amendment, it really raised some red flags. And that's because when you place a conservation easement on a, on a piece of property, like what was placed on this property, on the Weha tract, where this proposal, this proposed development is going to be, would be located, those restrictions are in perpetuity. They're deed restrictions, and they are required by federal law, by the Internal Revenue Service, that once you place conservation easements on, on property, it's got to be in perpetuity. And the reason is because the grantor of the easements had, gains a lot of valuable tax benefits from placing that easement on, and deed restricting their property. And so releasing those restrictions can only be done in extremely limited circumstances. And, and those circumstances are when the deed restrictions can no longer be, when they're either impossible or impractical to be able to enforce or carry out. And if you do want to lift the deed restrictions, you have to go through a judicial proceeding to have that done. So this conservation easement was put in place in 1995. The, the easement itself clearly says it's to be in perpetuity. And then in 2008, there is a purported amendment that, that eliminates the conservation purposes for which the easement was initially put in place. And when the local, when local planning agency has noticed that there's a project that's going to be in violation of deed restrictions, and the conservation easement is a deed restriction, then you all cannot approve that. So I'm asking you tonight to make sure that you do not approve a project that has deed restrictions on it and that you don't facilitate an illegal attempt to get around a binding restriction on this property. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that is our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you all for your comments. We move on to the approval of our minutes from our April 27, 2021 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of the minutes of April 27.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Minutes are approved. We move on down to, we have, yeah, we move on down to the appointments to boards and commissions. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of county council, I recommend that we reappoint Ronnie Giliard to the Economic Development Alliance Board.
And is that a motion, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, yes, it is.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor of the appointment, reappointment of Mr. Ronnie Giliard to the Economic Development Alliance Board? Please raise your hands. Oppose? Motion carries. We have Councilmember Johnson again, appointment to Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Chairman and council members, I move for the reappointment of Mr. Billy White to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
We have a motion for the appointment, reappointment of Mr. Billy White to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of the reappointment of Mr. Billy White to the Parks and Recreation Commission? Please raise your hand. Motion carries. We move on down to our resolutions and proclamations. We have a recommendation for the adoption of Resolution Number 2113 in support of House
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Members of council, you have before you this evening Resolution Number 21-13. It is a resolution by Georgetown County Council which would express support for South Carolina House of Representatives Bill Number 3620. That bill is known as the Clemente C. Pinkney Hate Crimes Act Bill, which would create provisions for an enhanced penalty for specific crimes committed against a victim who is intentionally selected based upon the offender's belief, any type of race, color, sex, gender, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical or mental disability. The House Bill has passed the chamber of the South Carolina House of Representatives. It is currently received and been approved for second reading by the South Carolina Senate and is currently awaiting a final vote, but this resolution would express support by Georgetown County Council for the passage and ultimate signing of the legislation by government master.
Is there a motion for approval of Resolution Number 21-13?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move forward in presenting Resolution 2113, Clemente C. Pinkney Hate Crimes Bill Act, that will be moved on to the Senate for their final voting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the adoption of Resolution Number 21-13? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion pass. We move on down to Resolution Number 2114, to proclaim May 16 through the 22nd, 2021 as Emergency Medical Services Week in Georgetown County. Is there Ellis?
Good evening, Chairman Morant. Members of council, given the hour, I'll be brief. I'm before you this evening, Proclamation 21-14, recognizing Emergency Medical Services Week, May 16 through 22 in Georgetown County. This year's theme of EMS Week is, this is EMS caring for our communities, and I can assure you the men and women of our Georgetown County EMS network live and breathe this motto day in and day out. They provide a very vital service to our community. As you know, this is a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation that is, you know, provided through our combined fire and EMS service throughout the county. They do this selfishly, and their dedicated service to our community has resulted in many, many life-saving opportunities and scenarios. I'm joined this evening by representatives from Georgetown County Fire EMS, Midway Fire Rescue, as well as Merle Zinlet Garden City Fire Rescue. All of these agencies make up our EMS network in Georgetown County, and they all participate in everything that we do, and they need to be recognized for that. And also that, and recognition for their efforts, as well as the talents that these men and women possess and display on a daily basis, we ask that you adopt this resolution to recognize May 16 through 22 as EMS Week in Georgetown County. Thank you.
You've heard the presentation from Mr. Ellis. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance Number 21-14? No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is there Resolution Number, or Proclamation Number 21-14?
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of Resolution Number 21-14.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Ordinance Number 21-17, an ordinance to amend Article 4, general provisions of the zoning ordinance to add Section 426 dealing with lighting requirements for residential developments along waterways. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, sir, thank you. Staff recently received a request from a property owner to address lighting along waterways for residential properties. This particular owner had an issue with some property across the creek in Merle's Inlet from him, and an issue with a glare from a dock there. The county currently addresses lighting in terms of beach properties and the protection of marine life, such as turtles. We have a section in our county code, but this only applies to properties along the beach and doesn't address neighbor-to-neighbor concerns. We also have a section in our zoning ordinance, in the buffer section, that deals with lighting for commercial businesses. This section is there to minimize the impact of artificial lighting in commercial areas and to reduce the negative effects on surrounding property owners. In that case, a commercial development does have to submit a lighting plan to our office as part of their zoning review. Our goal with this proposed ordinance change was to tailor the ordinance to only address specific complaints, so as not to overburden our limited code enforcement staff, and we also didn't want to place a burden on the property owner by having them submit very technical lighting plans just to erect a dock or include some lighting in their backyard if they're on the waterway. The proposed ordinance requires that lights in these areas not exceed 3,000 Kelvin. We did have some assistance, I should say, from the original complainer who made the request. He's also a design professional, so he was able to give us a little bit of assistance. I did look at several other ordinances from other jurisdictions in South Carolina, which became quite technical, so this is our attempt to keep this as simple as possible from the property owner's standpoint and the enforcement's standpoint. It does require that the lights not exceed 3,000 K. Lights at 2,500 to 3,000 K are warmer lights that give off less glare. The higher the number, the cooler the light, and the more glare that's provided, and there's an example of that in your packet. The proposed ordinance also requires that lights be recessed and shielded so that light is directed downward and away from any adjacent properties, and light poles are restricted to 16 feet in height. We presented this ordinance to the Planning Commission at their April meeting. A public hearing was held. One resident spoke in favor of the ordinance, and the commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval to you for the ordinance change.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions, comments, or remarks, Richardson?
Ali.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your explanation there, and I caught at the beginning, you were talking about the turtles and the beaches and the lights and et cetera. And I'm glad you mentioned that because I read this thing, and it seems to me that it's a bridge too far for the purposes of this section, and I'm talking about 426. The term "waterway" shall include but not be limited to creeks, rivers, rice fields, streams, canals, lakes, and ponds. Now, how did we ever morph from sea turtles coming up on the beach to this? This is like the, I don't even, I can't remember Department of Agriculture or somebody out there that wanted to call a waterway every mud puddle and rainy, rain ditch in the United States. It seems to me we're going down the same path here, and that's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We can certainly change that language, and lakes and ponds was frankly something I did debate because that adds a whole lot more properties to what will be covered. It's just a way to address a neighbor-to-neighbor concern across a large body of water.
And I understand that. Maybe we can caucus sometime and have a conversation about this. I just think it's too much of an all-encompassing thing for me. Thank you.
Understood.
I would like to offer, Mr. Chairman, that the applicant sent me some of the photographs, and this light, which was across the creek, was particularly blaring, glaring, would have been a nuisance under any circumstances. And obviously, when you're across a water body like a bay or a creek, and you have backyards looking back at one another, if somebody has something that's equivalent to a spotlight, it becomes a real problem for the neighbor on the other side. So I don't know how you tailor the ordinance, but I do think it's a problem, and I think the Planning Commission voted appropriately, seven oh, so I'd be in support.
Just to agree with you, Councilman, I totally understand what you're saying as far as, you know, light pollution, and it's like anything else, it's like the noise ordinance, you know, where do you stop and start? And I understand with the portion about the lumens of light that it was putting out or whatever, whatever unit of measure or use, and I understand that, but I just have a problem, as I said, with being all-encompassing. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Ms. Richardson? Do we have a motion regarding Ordinance Number 21-17? Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve Ordinance Number 21-17 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? We let the record reflect that there are five approved, two opposed. We'll move on down to Ordinance Number 21-18, an ordinance to amend the Georgetown Memorial Hospital Weehaw Campus Plan Development, TMS Number 02-1009-018-02-03, to allow for multifamily as a permitted use. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, sir. This request involves a 65-acre planned development that was approved for the Georgetown Hospital back in 2008. As been stated, it's located at the corner of Highway 701 and Wedgefield Road. The PD was originally approved for a hospital and associated medical uses, and the current request that's before us tonight is to amend this PD and add multifamily use to the list of uses for the planned development. This specific proposal for the addition of multifamily is limited to the 16 and 1/2 acres that are shown on the drawing in your packet. This located along Wedgefield Road. The applicant in this case is the Georgetown Hospital as the property owner. The particular developer that you've heard from tonight has a contract to purchase the property, but an amendment to the PD would apply to any future owner of the property. The site is adjacent to the remainder of the Weehaw tract to the east and south, a church and undeveloped property to the north, and undeveloped property to the west. The multifamily proposal is for 90 units to include some mixture of one, two, and three-bedroom units. The applicant developer or developer will be required to resubmit a full conceptual plan that would include issues like density, parking, buffers, tree retention, pervious and pervious calculations, as well as an updated traffic study as a major PD amendment. That amendment would come before Planning Commission and County Council with the same notification requirements that were included for this PD amendment. You do have some plans and exhibits in your packet. Those are for reference only, and they could change and be amended upon official submittal of a conceptual plan in the future. There was a traffic study reviewed and approved for this project back in 2008 as part of the hospital PD. That plan estimated that the hospital and associated uses would generate a total of 16,580 daily trips. The proposal for the 90 multifamily units eliminates two 70,000-square-foot medical office buildings from the PD. This would result in a total of 4,220 saved trips per day, so 4,220 trips less per day with the switch from the medical buildings to the multifamily for this portion of the The previous study also called for a new traffic light at the intersection of 701 and Wedgefield Road in addition to separate turn lanes. Again, that traffic study is quite old, it's from 2008. We would require an updated traffic study and a proposal of new traffic improvements at the time a conceptual plan is submitted before this body. The planned development was approved in 2008 as what we call a single-use PD. Since then, based on a South Carolina Supreme Court case and the county's revised planned development ordinance and the zoning ordinance, we require that PDs have mixed uses. The addition of the multifamily would bring the planned development into conformity with that requirement. The hospital has currently indicated that they have no current plans for the remainder of the track, but that it may possibly be used for additional medical offices in the future. Any request to add multifamily beyond the 16 and 1/2 acres that we are talking about here tonight would also be treated as a major change to the PD and would have to come back through the Planning Commission and County Council as a major change. So this approval is limited to the 90 units on that specific 16 and 1/2 acres. The future land use map for this track shows it as transitional. The comp plan describes transitional as the development of attractive land, building or structure with a variety of complementary uses, such as residential, office, medical office, limited retail, public, or entertainment, in a compact urban form. In conclusion, the transitional designation of this property supports the proposed residential use on this piece. There will be a decrease in traffic from the originally approved hospital plan, and the addition of the multifamily use will bring the PD into conformance with the requirement for mixed use. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this issue back in April. Ten people spoke at the hearing in addition to the applicant's representatives. There were There were two that spoke at that hearing in favor of the request citing the need for affordable housing in the county. And eight spoke in opposition to the request with similar concerns we've heard here tonight such as traffic, property values, quality of life, conservation easement, and environmental concerns. At that meeting, the Planning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval for the request to add multifamily as a permitted use to the PD with the following conditions: that a conceptual plan come back before and be reviewed as a major change, significant portion of the units be affordable, and that the maximum number of units allowed would not exceed 90. I know there's also been a lot of discussion about the LIHTC or the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program. We've provided some information on that to you. I'd be glad to go into that as well if you need, if you have questions. And, Mr. Chairman, I do think the applicant's representative is here, has a few things to present if you're agreeable to that at this time as well.
That is fine.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Given the late nature, I'm going to be very brief. You've been provided an awful lot of information about this request and about the potential project that may go there. But at the end of the day, all things aside, what you're being asked to do tonight is a pretty simple request, whether or not multifamily use is an acceptable use on this plan development in this location of the county. You've heard questions about the conservation easement situation. I understand you were briefed by your county attorney before this meeting and executive session, but if there is an additional question about that, I might be able to shed some information or light about that. You guys have all been doing this a long time. When there are zoning issues that attract lots of public interest, the general comments are for traffic, stormwater, and quality of life. And I think that's a fairly typical response to folks who are concerned in their community. But I think the request before you tonight is one that's a little bit more simple than it's being presented. It's just whether or not a multifamily designation is appropriate for this part of Georgetown County and on this PD. The developer is here. I am here to answer any questions. If in your discussion among yourselves you have additional questions that Holly can't answer, or maybe we can, we'll be available for that. I don't want to belabor any points here tonight, but we welcome any consideration of questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council members? Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've got a few comments. First off, I'd like to thank you all for your calls and written comments on both sides of the aisle out there. I appreciate all that. And I can tell you that we did do our due diligence on all this. We may not all agree, but I had two pages of comments that I gave to my colleagues. But I'm going to zero in on what I think is the root cause here. I've listened to all the comments, and a lot of common sense and logic went into your positions. I found it interesting the way everybody presented their case. But for me, I had the opportunity to sit down one-on-one, well, not actually one-on-one, but with Mr. Cates, the developer, and we had some pretty pointed discussion about this. And he explained a few things to me. And for me, it's a bigger problem than what the traffic is and what this is and what that is. And what steered blue line development to us was the federal government and our state government based on census tracts and an algorithm that he had to follow for him to come to Georgetown County from Montana. And this is the way I understood it. The program requires a developer to follow what I call an algorithm or protocol using census tracts as a foundation by which the developer accumulates points to compete with other developers to qualify a potential development to be included in a LIHTC program. So he had to score a bunch of points for different criteria from that algorithm. And what I found out as part of that is that it turns out that this is a HUD program, and it's a social engineering tool. And if you go back and listen to what Mr. Cates said during his discussion at the last Planning Commission meeting, I listened to that. And the tool was designed to move small pockets of low-income housing into larger areas of middle and high-income properties. So he was using the tool he had to work with from the federal government to get him to here. I asked him about what the census tract was, and he gave me the number. The tract that's we're talking about is tract number 9203.02, which contains only 6.3 square miles of county, or 16.3 square miles in a county that has 814 square miles of dry land. And it took him to a piece of property in that 6.3 miles that Title II Health owned, and that's how he came here. And another interesting thing, I look at the tract just north of it, and that tract includes Wedgefield, Weehawke, Mansfield, and Windsor communities. These developments just happen to contain the highest property values on the mainland side of the county. So that's how our developer got here. And I don't blame him. He's doing business. What I have a problem with is the state and federal government that's using social engineering to tell me how to use your tax dollars and my tax dollars and build what they want us to build where they want us to build it. That's why he was adamant, and this is just my opinion, saying the only place that I can put this development is on this piece of land. So based on that, I've got some serious problems with that, along with a lot of other things that I won't get into because you all have mentioned them all. On another note, as a fellow that spent most of his working life in East Tennessee, which is part of a bigger area that's made up of West Virginia, Eastern Kentucky, Southwest Virginia, East Tennessee, and western North Carolina, that area of our country is called Appalachia. I lived there for a long time. And I can tell you that what HUD is doing, they're doing the same thing in that area. The only difference is, is the poor folks in that area are mostly white, and they have the same problems there with intermingling the lower-income folks with medium and high-income folks that we're having right here. So don't think that this is a racial problem. It is not. I lived with it for a long time. It is what it is, and it's not racial. It's socio-economic, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from any other council members?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. We have before us the issue of the adding to the current provision amendment that will allow multifamily development. This particular opportunity zone scenario was more or less like a carve-out of a bill passed by Congress, Tax Cuts and Jobs Acts of 2017. And it was designed to encourage long-term private investments in communities left behind by recent national economic expansion. And our governor, McMaster, identified 135 opportunity zones. And my question is, in giving input to the governor who represented Georgetown County in identifying locations, where we are right now at Howard Auditorium, this is the west end of Georgetown. Opportunity zone, this wasn't included. You have from Merriman Road and High Market Street out to the city limits, that wasn't included. You have downtown Main Street Andrews, that wasn't included. You have west side of Andrews in dire need of housing, that wasn't included. There are a number of issues that have been presented to us as we've reviewed many of the documentation and information given to us to consider this situation. And at this point in time, the opportunity zone, there are many areas that we need to consider. And I'm at this point in time where either it goes back for further review before we make a final decision on where we're going to move on this project.
Any other comments from council members before we move forward?
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to say that the county recently engaged in a study that cost considerable money. A very qualified consultant prepared that study. And what he essentially said is that housing is needed across our county at all price points, all levels. Our Economic Development Director has said that his own economic development efforts have been impeded by the lack of housing in various spots in our county. So suffice it to say, we do need housing. I don't think any of us can blame a developer for following the incentive trail that's been provided by our government. And we can all be critical of where some of those lines were drawn and where some of these opportunities were placed. But that was typically done at a federal or state level. And again, we can debate why we didn't have input or where they should be or not be. But they are where they are. And so, again, I think that it's natural that a developer is going to follow the incentive trail. Based on what I know of Georgetown County, the city of Georgetown and the nearby surrounds, the income levels aren't sufficient to support market-rate multifamily housing. So you're left with trying to do something that is affordable, that is appropriate for income levels. Affordable housing typically, when done under the LIHTC program, looks like market-rate, the developer's getting a subsidy via the tax credits. And he's simply then able to discount rents by a percentage. This is not low-income subsidized housing. There's a significant difference. So I think there's every opportunity that this housing will look respectable and look as good as market-rate housing. It's also a goodly distance from Wedgefield. I certainly wouldn't want to impact on existing community. But I have the living Waverly up on the neck, and within a mile of Waverly, there's quite a bit of multifamily. There are all kinds of housing at all kinds of income levels. And I don't think it's impacted the values of the Waverly community that we have this kind of mix in our surrounding area. So getting back to the motion, I think we're being simply asked to approve whether this is a suitable tract for multifamily. Planning Commission voted on it seven to zero. It isn't a transition zone. Our planning director has indicated that this is a suitable site for multifamily. That's one of its designated uses. So I would urge the council to support the motion for approval.
Any other council person?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that I oppose the ordinance 21-18, multifamily development for the Wedgefield tract. What we've just observed for the last 30 years on the Walkamont Neck, poor planning, now we have high density, every complaint we get from the Walkamont Neck area is from, let's do the same thing we did over there, now we're going to bring it to the west side of the waterway. We need a better plan for these developments. Yes, the county needs affordable housing. The county needs low-income housing. There's too many places in the county that we can utilize this better. The Wedgefield area, it's not about anything other than multifamily housing for that On another point, without belaboring all the other points that have been brought out, is that as we as a council, are we going to determine how we develop the west side of the county? Or are we going to let some bureaucrat in Washington, D.C., Columbia, South Carolina dictate to us where we can put our developments? We want to be, we have a huge amount of land over here. We want to be smart about it. We want to be thoughtful of all those concerned, the residents in the area, as you have well heard. We need these developments. We can put them in better locations. We do not have to basically destroy a livelihood of everybody in that area with high-density development, which is what this will lead to. Thank you.
No? Okay. Prior to moving forward to vote, I would like to make a comment also. Thank you all for your comments and concerns regarding the multifamily zoning amendment on our agenda this evening. We have listened to you, read them intently, and will take them into consideration in making our decision. After speaking with you, listening to you, reading several correspondences and newspaper articles, I have been hearing a lot about low-income housing. The item on our agenda this evening does not pertain to low-income housing. The agenda item is whether a planned unit development presently owned by Title II Health or its subsidiary should be rezoned to allow multifamily housing. Again, I have been listening and reading. Most of the items relating to this matter touches upon why it should not occur. I keep looking for comments which would say that it can occur. If this were to happen, I never knew America as being a place of Kent. I don't think Georgetown County is considered a place of Kent. Changes occur. Someone said, there's a time when America's people were saying that we would never land on the moon. But someone said, what if? There was a time when it was said that America could not reach Mars. Again, someone said, what if? America's not a place of Kent. Neither do I believe Georgetown County is. I recall not in the so-distant past when all children learned together. The alleged advanced students were placed in the same classroom as the alleged not-so-advanced students. They learned from each other, and all succeeded and strived for the best. I also remember in the not-so-distant past when it was said that the merger of two county schools would not work. It would only lead to violence and destruction. Those merged schools have created a centralized, blue-ribbon school. I believe in America. I believe in Georgetown County. I believe in unity within our communities. I believe in looking through the external and concentrating more on the internal. I believe in, instead of concentrating on why it can't be, concentration should be on how it can be. I believe the requesting zoning change can be, and it can lead to a blended, better Georgetown County. With that being said, I move for the approval of ordinance number 21-18. Is there a second? Since the ordinance was initially approved at first reading entitled only- Since the ordinance was initially approved at first reading entitled only, I move to amend the ordinance to incorporate the ordinance text. Is there a second?
Second.
We will now move to vote on the amendment. Is there a motion for approval of the amendment? I mean, but we have a vote on the amended motion. All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. All opposed to the amended motion? There's four for approval, one abstention, two oppose for the amended motion. Now we go back to the original motion. All for approval of the motion as amended to approve the recommendation by the Planning Commission, please raise your hand.
I've stayed.
The motion has passed. There's four for approval, two objection, and one abstention. We move on down to ordinance number twenty-one dash nineteen, Ms. Langston.
There we go. Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman and County Council. This is budget ordinance number twenty-one dash nineteen, amending the fiscal year twenty-one budget for ongoing projects from prior fiscal year and items previously approved by County Council as described in your attachment. Staff requests that you approve this ordinance, and it will have to be amended from first reading by title only.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Langston? Is there a motion for second reading approval?
Approved.
There's a second?
Second.
Again, since it was only approved at first reading entitled only, is there a motion to incorporate the ordinance text?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now we'll go back to the, well, we'll go to the amendment first. All in favor of the amendment to incorporate the text, please raise your hand. Oppose? The motion passes. Now we'll go back to the original motion. All in favor of second reading approval of ordinance number twenty-one dash nineteen, please raise your hands. Now we'll move into our open session.
We are in open session.
Oh. Yeah, I hope so. You are in open session. If any more opinions to come before council this evening? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Stand adjourned. Motion passes. Y'all have a great evening.